Good evening, everyone. Want to welcome you all that are here tonight and those at home to the July 13th City Council meeting. The first item we always have at our City Council meeting is a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person has three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if you know it. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates time's up. So, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we actually have 11 people signed up. First person is Ruth Demler, followed by Jeremy Lawrence.
Ruth Demler, 1745 for Crest, Eugene. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you who participated at the workshop for the homeless. I really appreciate your caring words. I know the city is actively and very concerned, actively concerned about what we can do to help the many homeless in our community. I don't know if you know or realize that 2,700 families, if they don't have the TAN of funding, will either face foreclosure and be out in the streets, or will have to give up their rentals and be out in the streets. 2,700 families in Lane County. Somehow, we have to do better than what we're doing now to see that those families are housed. One idea might be, when we talk about places for people to camp, if we could arrange more camping in some of our parks, for trailers. I know it's been very successful at some places in our communities, such as Alton Baker, but people might be willing to donate trailers to families that have nothing, if we put the word out that we needed trailers and we needed more community support for the homeless. I'll just go over some of the notes that I had. Another thing they do in Portland is they have a place where people can store their goods during the day, and we need that. If they leave them where they were camping overnight, by the riverside, or wherever they are, because they have no other place, often their items are taken. They really need a place where they could just store during the day their items. If we could think of something, someplace we could do that, sometimes a large room with carts that they can put in and put their belongings in. Also, I'd like to mention that wheelchairs, if you have a wheelchair, there's no place for you to go, you can't go to the Mission. They don't take people who are disabled. And the shelter care now is lacking for funds. Funds have been cut from shelter care. So, people with wheelchairs have to sleep underneath the bridges, and that is a sad way to have to spend the night, on a rainy night, cold in the wintertime, under a bridge in a wheelchair. Towing, we were talking about towing at the workshop today, and you know, if you have an RV or a large camper, it can be up to $1,000 to retrieve it, so they never do. And when it's towed then, they never see their belongings again. And often, just for the car, it's a couple of hundred dollars, and then they never get it back. So towing is really, if there's some way we can see that people have a place to put their vehicle, they won't have it towed, and we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Lawrence is next, followed by Mark Callahan.
Jeremy Lawrence, currently homeless in Eugene. I apologize now if I sound shaky. I'm not good at being in front of people, so if I, I'm not a very eloquent speaker, I'm afraid. Along the same lines as the last lady that just spoke, I'd also like to discuss an issue that deals with homelessness, in particular, the lack of facilities for the homeless to use, as far as restrooms and so forth. There are a few spots here within town, but they close at 10 o'clock. As far as I know, there's nothing that's open 24 hours a day, something as simple as an outhouse at the park across from the courthouse, or in any of the other, you know, main areas where the homeless tend to congregate in this town. Excuse me. And as far as making a point with what the last lady said about the housing and stuff, I believe the states are eligible for federal grants, and there's federal money from the Housing Commission for developing things for homeless, low-income. I mean, and there's plenty of buildings around this town that can be bought and turned into even something as simple as like the warming centers during the winter months, where you go there, you sleep, and you leave in the morning. It's not somewhere you hang out like the Mission. Any little thing would help, and, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mark Callahan is next, followed by Ann Bridgman.
Good evening, Mayor Percy and members of the City Council. My name is Mark Callahan. I live at 3621 Malon Avenue in Eugene. I'm a father, I'm an average American, and I love my country. I'm here tonight to fully support and advocate for Councilor Mike Clark's idea to recite the Pledge of Allegiance before each City Council meeting. I know the discussion on this is scheduled for next week's City Council meeting, but I wanted to give you, this council, something to ponder and think about this next week. The Pledge of Allegiance unites us under one flag, under one nation, no matter whether we consider ourselves conservative or liberal, Republican or Democrat, or live north of the river or south of the river here in Eugene. We are the people of the United States of America, not just citizens of our little corner, our microcosm we call Eugene, Oregon. Our flag is a symbol of hope, of courage, and of our character. It represents the honor and the efforts of our troops throughout history and throughout the world, that I personally cherish and thank for their efforts, who have died for our freedom, that we hold sacred as every American, as we do. It saddens me that two words, i.e. the words "under God" in the pledge are nitpicked and criticized to the extent that it prevents those that know what our country was founded upon and who founded our great nation, from reciting the pledge in the forums such as this. Please join me in reciting the pledge tonight, if you choose to do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ann Bridgman is next, followed by Michael Carrigan.
Good evening. My name is Ann Bridgman. I live in Eugene in Councilman Zelenko's ward, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, how Eugene is suffering as a result, and what can be done about it. The federal government has spent well over a trillion, that's with a T, dollars, on the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. Part of that money was financed through debt, but a large chunk of it was money that could have been spent on America, aiding state and local governments to provide public services, social services, and programs. Here in Oregon, Lane County and the city of Eugene have seen millions of dollars in budget cuts since these wars began. It's time to reclaim this money. What does that mean? It means putting pressure on our elected officials in Congress to end the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, wars that have already cost Eugene more than $358 million. It means asking our elected officials in Washington to start reining in the Pentagon's budget, which has doubled since 1998 to a staggering $725 billion, way more than is needed to keep us secure. I'm here tonight because it's come to my attention that Councilwoman Brown plans to introduce a resolution to express the council's desire that funds to continue the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan be redirected to domestic priorities. You already know what these priorities are for the city of Eugene and Lane County. They include funding our schools adequately. They include keeping open a place like First Place, which provided 100 slots for homeless preschoolers, so they could get a boost in readiness for school, and which may close soon due to budget cuts. They include supporting environmental programs, rebuilding infrastructure, and creating jobs. In light of the severity of the ongoing economic crisis, it is imperative that we use our nation's financial resources for the good of our nation. It's time to reorder our priorities so that money that's spent on foreign wars comes home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Michael Carrigan, followed by Duncan Rhodes.
Good evening. My name is Michael Carrigan. I'm a community organizer at Community Alliance of Lane County. We've been doing community organizing work around peace and justice issues for 45 years in Lane County. I live and work in Ward 7. Ann Bridgman alluded to the crucial importance of bringing our tax dollars home from the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. If the Eugene City Council votes to support such a resolution, it would be in good company. Across the United States, cities, municipalities, and counties are mounting efforts to bring our war dollars home. As you probably know, our own Mayor Percy has submitted a resolution to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, calling on Congress to redirect military spending to domestic priorities. Already, 17 mayors have signed on, including the mayors of Madison, Wisconsin, Baltimore, and Los Angeles. The resolution will be presented at the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting in Baltimore, June 17th to the 21st. But that's not all. Towns like Hartford and San Francisco, and counties like Montgomery County, Maryland, people are launching campaigns urging action to shift war dollars to local communities to bring the war dollars home. Already, as Ann has mentioned, the United States has spent more than a trillion dollars on these two wars. It's hard to conceptualize what a trillion dollars means, but there's a group called the National Priorities Project. If you key into their website, the name of your city, our city, and state, they'll tell you how much money the war cost your city. As Ann said, thus far it's cost Eugene about $358 million. What does that mean in terms of services and programs? The National Priorities Project helps with that, too. For that $358 million, we could have bought low-income health care for 187,855 children for a full year, or that money would have bought 5,678 elementary school teachers for a year, or the VA medical care for just over 45,000 military vets. The American people want the Afghanistan and Iraq wars to end, they want an end to all the deaths, 128 from Oregon, or it's strong connection to the state, and they want an end to the dollars spent. In a Megal poll, 59% of respondents said, "We should bring our troops home from Afghanistan." As elected officials, your weight, your voice carries special weight. Combined with the voices of other city councils around the country, you can make things happen. You can help bring these wars to an end and help bring the war dollars home. I urge you to support Council Brown's resolution when it comes before you in a few weeks, and thank you for giving me the chance to speak today.
Thank you. Duncan Rhodes is next, followed by Bill Eddy.
Duncan Rhodes from the Whittaker. I'm in Andrea's district. Just general things on the homeless issue. We seem to have a disproportionate number of them in the Whittaker area. A couple of months ago, there was a meeting of the neighbors around Slatten Park with some of the issues with homeless camping, and it is a problem. I certainly agree that there are a lot of things that we need to do for the homeless, and more portable toilets and 24-hour availability would certainly be great, as well as the supply of potable water. On the loyalty oath, the Pledge of Allegiance, personally, I think that's ridiculous. What's next? We gonna have McCarthy hearings?
Next is Bill Eddy, followed by Gary Jenkins.
I'm Bill Eddy, 830 Crest Drive in Eugene, and I'd like to just talk about the Crest Drive safety issues as they exist today, since the roads were improved. The Crest Drive project is complete, and while the potholes are gone, the new street design for Crest, Story, and Friendly is actually more dangerous than before. The new streets are far too narrow, inviting accidents, especially in the curved sections of the roads. Every visitor I've had to my house since the streets were completed have commented about the narrowness of the roads and how dangerous they seem to be. Anytime I meet a garbage truck on Crest Drive, or any large vehicle, I almost come to a complete stop to let the thing pass. And the steep curbs and the drainage ditch leave no room to bail out. I've seen several vehicles stuck up to their axles in the drainage areas after avoiding a collision. Further, any consideration for bike safety was completely ignored, strange in a city that promotes bikes as a healthy and environmental way to traverse our city streets. And any accommodation for school buses or city buses totally omitted from the planning Recently, I called the Office of the City Engineer about these concerns, and was told that the city engineer, Mr. Shoenig, either was reluctant to sign off on this project or refused to sign off on the project. If this is the case, and this I got from the city engineering office, if this is the case, a serious injury or fatal accident occurring on the street due to the street design, imagine what a moderately talented attorney could present to a jury and the liability the city would face, knowing that the city engineer did not sign off on the project. There is still time to improve the safety in these streets, widening in certain spots, possibly a speed bump or two in the steeper sections, reduction of the steep curb cut to allow vehicles room to bail out if they need to. And I think if any of you have driven the street since it's been completed, I think you might agree. I've even heard the mayor is concerned about the safety of these streets. That's just a story I've heard. As for future road projects, I urge the council to rely more on the city engineer and less on the whims of a neighborhood association. Thank you.
Next is Gary Jenkins, followed by Maria Jenkins.
Hi, I'm Gary Jenkins, 909-39 Prairie Road. March 13th, 2010, Police Chief Kearns lied to the media and the citizens of Eugene when he stated, "This officer was brutally attacked by my son and my wife." My son was the young man that was brutally attacked when he received 40 stitches to My wife and myself were trying to deal with the aftermath of what happened March 13th, 2010, and Police Chief Kearns' lies to the media and the false reports that he had made. The police report stated that I had brutally attacked the police officer also and jumped on top of her, and somehow she got out from underneath me. Well, we all know that if I would have did that, I would have been sitting in jail, too, along with the false allegations that my wife brutally attacked this police officer here, Carissa Hartman. The review board stated that they did a complete investigation, but in the investigation, they didn't even have this photo. But such a brutal attack of a police officer, and they didn't even have a photo of this police officer that was stating that she was brutally attacked. My wife and myself are asking that the council members and different people of the community put together some kind of a format, or some kind of a policy, or something to where this can be reviewed again. We have had several people within the community that have signed a petition for some hired governor to look into the allegations that my wife was brutally attacked, this police officer, and my son. It's a travesty when you have a police officer or a chief that has an office of authority and goes and abuses that authority. We all, as citizens, are supposed to be held responsible for our actions. Well, we ask that the police and the chief be responsible for their actions also. It's not right to have an office of authority and then go ahead and abuse it, and to devastate a family because of it. My wife has been willing to take any type of a polygraph test, or any type of a test that's available, so she can show her innocence in what has happened. She is now a felon because of this, and this is a woman that's never had a problem in her life with the city of Eugene or the police for that matter. But now, we're trying to deal with being homeless because of this incident, which we are. We've been homeless now for over a year because of this incident, and the fact that my wife being a felon for attacking somebody that she didn't, it's almost impossible to find a place to reside. So we live in our vehicle, and we have for over a year. So my wife and myself ask that you please look into this matter and see if you can do something to help this family get back on their feet, and to get the justice that needs to be done and taken, so we can get the truth out to what has actually really happened.
Next is Maria Jenkins, followed by Wayne Ford.
My name is Maria Jenkins, and what my husband didn't bring out is that the policewoman in that photo there weighs 200 pounds, and she is smiling and laughing. This is taken 10 minutes after she is saying she was brutally attacked. Excuse me, attacked. They worked, Police Chief Kearns worked the system to his, what he wanted it to be, which held on to me for four months and my son for two months, which caused my family to plead out. They kept us all separated, violated our civil rights, and like my husband said, we were the ones that were brutally attacked, not the police. Like he said, if he had brutally attacked this police officer, why were there no charges put on him? My son is also facing the aftermath of this. My son is having really bad problems. He can't speak right, his eyes messed up, he can't hold down a job, and he can't be hired because he's a felon. Same thing with me. The reason we're homeless is, I pay the court system every month, money that comes out of my husband's check. We only get one check, and it's $9.88 a month. I pay money to a court system, saying that I beat up a woman I didn't beat up. I pay a supervised fee to a probation officer, which I really don't owe to anybody, because like I said, I'm willing to take a polygraph test to prove who really did what that night. The whole thing was, is that this was a liability issue with Police Chief Kearns, and that's why he got on TV and lied to the public, because of what had happened that evening. This was wrong, what was done to my family and the lies that were told about my family. I weigh 108 pounds. This is a 200-pound police officer. I don't think I could have done anything. I have three herniated discs in my back and a cyst. Another thing is, I'd like to know if it's police policy for police officers to exit their car with flashlights in their hand with the intent to maim and hurt somebody. Why didn't they taser? My son was unarmed. He ran, trying to go for help, because he didn't know what was going on, when the police officer struck him from the back of the head. My son went down on his knees, picked himself up, the police officer spun my son around, pepper sprayed my son to the point he was blind, and proceeded to beat his head in with a flashlight. This is a little boy that was hit by a car when he was five years old, bled in several areas of his brain, was in a coma, and had to be retoured how to walk and everything. And when this police officer did what he did, hitting my son and causing 40 stitches to the same exact area from when he was a child, my son is now facing a lot of problems because of this. I think this is wrong, and I think it's wrong that the city order McKisner, Mr. McNutt, which is from the Internal Affairs, and also the city manager, who didn't see this picture of this woman's police officer, turn around and close this case before ever seeing the evidence. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Wayne Ford is next, followed by James Baptiste.
My name is Wayne Ford. I reside at 85560 Svarverood Road, Eugene. I'm the chair of the Homeless Action Coalition, and I'd like to tell you about a story from my past. Here in Eugene, I used to work for an agency that provided residential treatment program for the criminally insane, people from Oregon State Hospital who had 20 and 30-year sentences for violent crimes committed while they were mentally ill. The fact that nobody ever heard of that program is an attribution to its success, that nobody ever got in any trouble in the seven years that program ran down here. We had to deal with the state psychiatric security review board, which basically runs the state hospital program, that they would take back anybody who went bad in our program immediately. They would put out a state warrant for any police officer to incarcerate them and take them immediately to the state hospital as soon as possible. We had a resident starting to go bad on us one night. He was cooperative. He knew he was having increased symptoms. He knew he was going back to the state hospital, and he knew he'd be able to come back when he got better. So he was very cooperative, no problems. Took him down to the local emergency room, where the doctors there said, "Well, he doesn't look crazy enough to me to hospitalized." And so I said, "Well, I'm not going to take him back. It's 3:00 in the morning. If you want to turn criminally insane person with a warrant out for him loose on the streets of Eugene and accept the liability for that, be my guest, because he ain't going back to the group home." They decided they, maybe they could hospitalized him. So they called Whitebird to transport him over to the psychiatric hospital, which he had at that time, and the police intercepted the call to cahoots. And as he was being transferred from one hospital to another, the police intercepted cahoots, arrested him, took him into custody for failure to appear on a five-year-old camping citation. They kept him for four days, since it was the weekend, in the county jail, probably on the psychiatric unit, getting some help there. He went to court on Monday, where the charges were dropped, when it was found that the reason he didn't appear was because he was incarcerated in the maximum security unit at the state hospital at the time. How much money did the city of Eugene spend on this camping citation alone? How much are camping citations? By the way, he could have, the county could have collected Medicaid and Medicare reimbursements if he had gone to the hospital, too. So how much are we spending on these camping citations, and how much does it cost us to impound somebody's car when they can't get it back? That whole process and the legal process has to cost us a lot, and I think we need to take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you. James Baptiste is next, followed by Tom Camus.
My name is James Baptiste. This is the second time I've been at a council meeting. Council and Mayor Percy, I'm from California, and I see things that probably, I don't know, it's different. It's kind of liberal, of course, but the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag, that's probably one of the best things for our kids to learn, and under God is necessary. We got a city hit down here now, I've owned property for about 20, 25 years, and it's gone to a desert, there's nothing there. Then you hear about the police brutality of these people. City council, you gotta do something, something's gotta stop. And then you hear last week that a gentleman says, "Oh, where's this money coming from for whatever project we're gonna do?" And then he doesn't like it. He says, "Well, Bean's been working on it for a long time. I don't like this, but I was still going to vote for it." You can raise taxes, like me, if property owners have renters, to where they won't be able to live either. You guys are gonna have a large desert. It'll be Desert of Eugene. There'll be nobody to live in here but the people that live in the streets. And the street people are a big problem, but you gotta think of business first. The businesses that supports, the taxes that pay for these people to be taken care of, are being raped. They're not there anymore. Whatever problem you have is devastating, and you're not gonna get any more money. The idea of stopping the war on Iraq, what's the places? That money is just bogus money. It's just put out there for nothing. These people will never see this money in this town if they stop the war tomorrow. Their grandchildren will never get the money, because there's too much debt right now. So thinking you're gonna stop the war to bring money here to Eugene, it's not gonna happen. You gotta learn to live on your own, and stop this raising taxes for a street project, because they don't have enough money. Somebody's gotta do something. I don't know what you're, you can do, but what I can see is pretty bad, because I know if the taxes go up too high, I'll just have to raise the tax on my property renters, and then they're gonna be sitting there going, "Gee, I'm gonna live in the streets some more." So you're in the same boat. You're gonna make it worse. You've got the history of the largest amount of foreclosures in the state coming on now, and next year it's gonna be worse. Something's gotta take. You gotta create jobs, gotta have business downtown. If support the police off these people they're beating up is necessary, then go back to downtown and rescue it. You've got security guards taking care of the bus station and the library. A year ago, it was horrible. It's nice now, but the people are still there, causing problems, defecating the stairwell. Doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Camus is our last speaker this evening.
Tom Camus, Andrea T's Ward. Many have come before you countless times, as concerned citizens and business owners begging for you to take action on what is viewed as continued criminal behavior in and around our homes and businesses downtown. The council's tolerance of this behavior may explain this event. On Saturday, June 4th, a 16-year-old girl, a high school freshman, overdosed on methamphetamines in a public bathroom in the parking structure next to the deck. She's well-known by EPD. They have tried to get her assistance, but has been allowed free rein downtown. She panhandles and is suspected of trading sex for money. This is the same girl I found behind the atrium building, half-undressed, smoking meth with a 40-year-old man. How can this be tolerated? If this were your daughter, would something finally happen? This isn't about homelessness downtown. It's about commonplace activities in our city that seem to be deemed good by this council. We've become a destination and a sanctuary for criminal travelers, homeless- We've become a destination and a sanctuary for criminal travelers, homeless, mentally ill persons prone to violence, and this is due to an actual support of social services and law enforcement. Note, tools given to EPD that are not supported by the city and the city's lawyers give more powers to offenders than they do to law enforcement. Behavior such as assault, drug use, public drunkenness, prostitution, arson, intimidation, harassment, ranging from annoying to aggressive to violent, are witnessed by your constituents, no matter what ward they reside in. Still, the problems are the same. Still, nothing from this council. It seems that these behaviors are deemed by the council and city lawyers as one's right to free speech. Your inaction on these assaults of your citizens is a crime. It is said the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. We've done the same thing for too long. Tonight, consider a different approach. Actually do something. Other cities have faced these challenges and taken action. Albuquerque, Berkeley, Austin worked with the ACLU to rework ordinances that were written as blanket bans. Now, they restrict time, place, or manner of panhandling in specific high-crime areas of town, including in front of ATMs, churches, transit shop stops, restaurants, Siwa cafes, food carts, and bars. Medford and Roseburg have new rules banning panhandling at intersections that are cast as traffic ordinances. Dallas, Cincinnati, Minneapolis, and Greensboro have licensed their panhandlers. I still believe in our downtown. I also believe, as leaders, it is your duty to act. I believe lip service does not solve anything. I believe the actions speak louder than words. Members of this council have stated loudly when it's time for reelection that you support businesses in downtown, but when it comes time for the action, nothing happens. I believe this council is out of touch. Coming down on First Fridays does not give you a good idea of what it's like to do business downtown the rest of the month. You envision a...
Thank you. No, can't do that. End of the public forum. And now councillors have an opportunity to give their response. I'm just going to say thank you for the people who came to discuss various aspects of the homeless issues, about their feelings about the pledge, about the resolution to bring dollars home, about the legal issue that one couple were facing. I just want to remind people that when people come to our public forum, they are permitted to talk about anything they would like to talk to us about, and it's not always absolutely factual or true. It is their opinion and the way they view the thing that they're working on. I also want to say, yes, we know that we have safety issues, and we're working diligently on them, and I would point out that I think the efforts made to revitalize the downtown, the database strategies, the additional police officers that have been put downtown are indeed absolutely actions, and we are working hard on it. Councillor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank everybody for coming down this evening. I heard the Jenkins challenge, and I'll definitely be trying to review that case or looking to the background that is available to me as a city councillor. I just wanted to mention to the gentleman who talked about cahoots transporting people with, coming from the emergency rooms, and the policy has changed now, where they are not given all the information when they call for folks. They are just given the first name, not the last, so they don't run them through their air system, so that cahoots is a neutral party and not a party to helping get people arrested if they have outstanding warrants. They're there for more, for, they're the support for people who are on the street. And I appreciate Tom coming down, Mr. Camus, once again, to remind us of the downtown. I think that, I personally feel like we've done a lot, and maybe it's not evident to you, to the people who live down there, but I know that the conversation permeates a lot of our work and what we've done, and definitely a lot of our extra funding that's gone into policing is really focused on downtown. And so I just, you know, the pendulum swings wide and takes a long time, and I hear your frustration, and I know that, you know, you're, you deal with a lot of stuff, Tom, and I really do appreciate the work that you do for that part of town and bringing it to us and keeping it real. Panhandling has been something that's come before this council in the past, but I don't think it's been here recently. Could we, could I possibly get a work session poll out for that? Because I hear a lot from my constituents in other parts of the community also, that it's really a concern, and it's kind of a safety concern in some of the areas where there's a lot of traffic and people come out to the street to give people, you know, to help people do that. And I think that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Two things is, when we get a legal issue, there are parameters, especially when they involve people who work for us. We have real constraints on the role that we can play in that, and we can give you more definition on that, but in fact, we are constrained on taking any action on personnel issues by our city charter. The other thing I would like to say is, I think when we've looked into the issue of panhandling before, it is against the law for people to step out into the streets to panhandle, but when they are on public sidewalks, the Oregon Constitution, not us, the Oregon Constitution protects their rights. That is considered to be asking for charity unless it has some kind of criminal activity that goes with it, and asking for charity is protected by the Constitution of Oregon. And it's been tested multiple, 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 multiple times, and so far, it has not been changed in our Constitution. I think that's correct, right, Emily?
Yep.
So that's just the issues, the way that we have to deal with the Oregon Constitution. So we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, and that's a consent calendar. Councillor President.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I don't see any discussion, so would you please vote on the consent calendar? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. The next item up is an action on an ordinance establishing the historic Brunner Schmidt's House. Councillor President.
I move to adopt Council Bill Number 5048, an ordinance establishing the HBS historic Brunner Schmidt's House, special area zone, and amending the Eugene zoning map.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I see no questions, so would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Next item on our agenda, special ordinance granting exemption to the application of code. Councillor President.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5049, an ordinance granting an exception to the application of Eugene Code 1971, Section 6.200, for prescribed wetland management burning.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I see no questions. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. I just want to insert in here that these last two items, which may have seemed to go by very rapidly in terms of the vote, are the result of several meetings and long discussions, so they are not being done without thought and consideration. All right. Next item is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, and the first group that we are appointing is a civilian review board. Councillor President.
I move to reappoint Eric Van Hooft into Position 1 on the civilian review board for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. See no discussion? Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes. Congratulations to Eric. All right, next one up.
I move to reappoint Snell Fontas to Position 2 on the civilian review board for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. See no one in the queue? Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Congratulations to Mr. Fontas. Next one.
I move to appoint George Rody to Position 5 on the civilian review board, an unexpired term ending on June 30th, 2012.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Polling.
I move to amend by inserting the name Robert or Bob Case.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to replace George Rody with Bob Case. Councillor Ortiz.
I actually have another motion.
Okay, ready to vote on replacing George Rody with Bob Case? Please vote. Four in support and four in opposition. I support the appointment of George Rody, so I would be number five in opposing the motion. So we're back then to the main motion, moving to appoint George Rody. Councillor Ortiz.
Look at the buttons, right. I move to amend to appoint Elizabeth Meader.
Is there a second? There is no second. We're back to George Rody. Please vote. Eight in favor. Congratulations to George Rody. Next one.
I move to appoint Deborah Velour to Position 7 on the civilian review board, an unexpired term ending on June 30th, 2012.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Zelenka.
I move to substitute Elizabeth Meader.
Is there a second?
All second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, we'll vote on the substitute motion. Two in favor and six in opposition. It does not pass. We're back to the main motion. Would you please vote on that? Eight in favor. Congratulations to Ms. Velour. Now we're going to move to the next one, which is the historic review board. Councillor President.
I move to appoint Heather A. Cleaver to Position 6 on the historic review board for a four-year term ending on June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. See no one in the queue? Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition, so congratulations to Ms. Cleaver. Next, we're going to La Rapa, the Lane Regional Air Protection, Protection Agency? That's the old name, sorry. Okay, go ahead and put the...
I move to appoint Scott Lucas.
Let's say reappoint.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to reappoint Scott Lucas to Position 2 on the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no one in the queue? Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. Congratulations, Mr. Lucas. Next one.
I move to appoint Stacy Byan to Position 4 on the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we did not see the applicants for this, but I move to, I know that Jeanine Parisi applied for this position, and I move to substitute her name at this point.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, so let's vote on the substitute motion. All those in favor, I mean, please vote on it. Six in favor and two in opposition. It passes, so now you have a substitute motion to, for Jeanine Parisi. So would you please vote? Six in favor and two in opposition. It passes. Congratulations to Ms. Parisi. And now we're on to the Lane Workforce Partnership.
I move to reappoint John Lively to Position 2 on the Lane Workforce Partnership, a term ending on December 31st, 2013.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. See no one in the queue? Would you please vote? Seven, eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Congratulations, Mr. Lively. Next one.
I move to reappoint Gary Wildish to Position 8 on the Lane Workforce Partnership, a term ending on December 31st, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Don't see anyone in the queue? Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. Congratulations, Mr. Wildish. Next.
I move to reappoint Chandra Holliday to Position 14 on the Lane Workforce Partnership, a term ending on December 31st, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Nobody in the queue? Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Congratulations, Ms. Holliday. Next.
I move to reappoint Rosie Pryor to Position 9 on the Lane Workforce Partnership, a term ending on December 31st, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue? Please vote.
You could, you could.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes. Congratulations, Ms. Pryor. We're moving on to the planning commission.
I move to reappoint William Randall to Position 5 on the planning commission for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue? Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Congratulations, Mr. Randall. Next one.
I move to reappoint Richard Duncan to Position 7 on the planning commission for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue? Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Thank you, congratulations, Mr. Duncan. Now we're going on to the police commission.
I move to appoint Caitlin Lang to Position 1 on the police commission, the unexpired term ending on June 30th, 2012.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Farr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, the police commission is appointed or recommended a little bit differently than the other commissions. Can you explain that?
It's just the way you set it up. It's me, I would do the recommending, I do the recommending and you do the voting on it.
So these are recommended by the mayor?
That's right.
Okay. And didn't go through interviews of the entire council?
Yes. No, they didn't go through interviews at the entire, I did the interviews and the police commission did interviews.
Oh, I guess I knew that, didn't I? Thank you. We didn't agree.
Okay, ready to vote? Please vote. Seven in favor and one in opposition. Okay, it passes. Congratulations, Ms. Lang. Next is, do the next one.
I move to appoint Bob Walker to Position 4 on the police commission for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue? Please vote. Seven in favor and one in opposition. It passes. Congratulations, Mr. Walker. Next one.
I move to appoint Jesse, I'm not sure...
Lorkey, I think it is.
Lorkey to Position 5 on the police commission for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue? Please vote. Consistency count, seven in favor and one in opposition. It passes. Congratulations, Mr. Lorkey. Our next one.
I move to reappoint Tamara Miller to Position 6 on the police commission for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue? Please vote. Oops, someone in the queue? Councillor Clark.
I just wanted to say very quickly that I'm definitely supporting her reappointment. She's been the chair for a couple of years running here and done a fantastic job. She's a wonderful, wonderful volunteer on this committee.
Okay, would you please vote? Eight in favor. Okay, and none in opposition. Congratulations, Ms. Miller. And next.
I move to reappoint James Manning to Position 7 on the police commission for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue? Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Congratulations, Mr. Manning. Now we're going to go to the toxics board, which you, I believe, did do the interviews for.
I move to appoint Thomas Carmichael to Position 1, an industry representative on Move to appoint Thomas Carmichael to Position 1, an industry representative on the Toxic Board for an unexpired term ending on June 30th, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, oops, in the queue. Councillor Polling.
I'd just like to state that on some of these, and particularly the Toxics Board, I will be voting in favor of the names recommended, however, I'm really disappointed that we've had to work so hard to get applicants to come in and interview or go through the process to appointments to these boards and commissions. Again, the reason why I am going to vote for these positions is because they're the only ones that, that applied, and normally, in a normal election, if there is somebody running unopposed, and I don't know the person that well, I'd rather not vote for him at all. So, but in this case, since I do have to vote, rather than voting no, I am going to vote yes, and I would encourage people in the community, the next go-around on boards, commissions, to get active, get involved, and start applying for some of those positions. Thank you.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on this one? Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, passes. Congratulations, Mr. Carmichael. Next one.
I move to appoint Sheila Gardner to Position 2, an industry representative on the Toxic Board for a three-year term beginning on July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, passes. Congratulations, Ms. Gardner. Next.
I move to appoint Christine Zeller Powell to Position 4, an advocacy representative on the Toxics Board, for an unexpired term ending on June 30th, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, so congratulations to Ms. Zeller Powell, and I just want to say I know her, she's just getting her degree in, her law degree, and I think it's her environmental law degree, so she's going to be a good, a really good addition. Next.
I move to appoint Allison Guzman to Position 5, an advocacy representative on the Toxics Board, for a three-year term beginning on July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Nobody in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Congratulations, Ms. Guzman. Next.
I move to reappoint Stephen Flanagan to Position 7, a neutral representative on the Toxics Board, for a three-year term beginning on July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief statement that, once again, Ward 6 will be dreadfully underrepresented on boards and commissions, through no fault of this body, I might add. We don't have a great deal of activity as far as people applying for the boards and positions from Ward 6, and I'd like to join George Polling, Councillor Polling, in encouraging more people to apply, so give us a broader field. I do, however, know of one Board 6, excuse me, one Ward 6 citizen who passed over in this process. Thank you.
All right, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, so congratulations, Mr. Flanagan. And now we go to the Willamette Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee.
I move to reappoint William Hughes to Position 1 on the Willamette Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee, for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, congratulations, Mr. Hughes. Next.
I move to reappoint Elliot McIntyre to Position 2 on the Willamette Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee, for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, congratulations, Mr. McIntyre. Next.
I move to appoint Patricia Moore to Position 6 on the Willamette Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee, an unexpired term ending on June 30th, 2012.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, congratulations, Ms. Moore. Next.
I move to appoint John Andriola to Position 8 on the Willamette Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee, for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, congratulations, Mr. Andriola. Last one for today.
I move to reappoint Mary Morrison to Position 9 on the Willamette Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee, for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2011, and ending on June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, congratulations, Ms. Morrison. I want to say on the part of all of us up here, I want to thank you to all the people who applied. We appreciate everyone who put their name forward, and thank those who are taking up their duties on our committees and commissions. And with that, we'll be done for this evening. Thank you.